All right, welcome everybody to this edition of the Get Oiling, Get Growing Weekly Work Session. I am Coach Ashley and I am joined here today by our founder and creator of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin.
Hello everyone, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Yeah, super excited to see everyone popping in today. Go ahead and come over in the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Let us know if things are thawing out in your neck of the woods. I thought it would here in New York and it did not. It's cold again. Today, for those of you who are new, just to do a little bit of housekeeping, today is going to be a little bit more Q and A oriented as opposed to a deeper in-depth training. So what we're doing right now is every other week, we're really diving into a topic that I'm teaching. And then on weeks in between, we'll definitely still teach, but we want to have more room to work together and dive into any issues that you might be facing in your business or with navigating, growing your business online that we can work together with you here on this live call. So hello, Virginia upstate. Oh, see, I'll take cloudy, sticky, rainy in New Orleans. Actually Paige, I need to get in touch with you. I might come down there soon. I'm missing the south. Awesome. So yeah, y'all go ahead and keep coming in. Let us know how things are going for you. Actually, oh, I forgot to put together a poll. Let's just do this informally for those of you here today. And I'll go ahead and pop up my share here because I want to get you guys' feedback. If I could get the right screen. The screen is so big. All right, there it is. Okay, now I'm going to share. Okay, beautiful. Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Okay, so today we are, for our more brief teaching, we're going to be talking about using newsletters and promotions. And so the poll first is for you guys, do you currently use newsletters to grow your Young Living business? Do you currently use newsletters? And if you want to, go ahead and, you know, give us a little share. Tell us how you're using them. All right, computer is doing this weird thing again where I can't see my cursor. Okay, well, all right, well, I'll just keep moving through this way. Greg, if you'd like to maybe share if anybody's writing anything, I can't get access to it right now.
Oh, sure. Yeah, let's see here. So two yeses, have a no. Somebody says I'd like to. Paige says I'd send, I sent my first one last week to announce monthly promos. Jan says just starting monthly promo updates. Elizabeth is not using now. James says not currently our own. And Suzette says I haven't since I've been doing YL and a few not yet. So kind of a mixture looks like.
Yeah, all right, cool. So just in keeping with the fact that tomorrow, Young Living is going to release its monthly PV promo. And this is definitely the time of the month that you want to definitely get your builders and your customers informed. But then also, you know, we want to look at navigating how you can share the information that you'll be getting tomorrow and do this on a monthly basis in such a way that it works really well for people who are already customers. And it's interesting and relevant to people who aren't yet. Because obviously, we always want to get more fresh eyes and more interest on what we're doing. So we're going to talk about that today. And today, so we're going to cover first, how to create newsletters to help you grow. And first, creating a system around using them to save you time so that every, so you could set yourself a reminder that at, you know, the day before, the first day of the month, or maybe on the first day of the month, if you don't need the additional preparation, you know, to always know exactly what you're going to do to get that newsletter put together and sent out. And then how to share the lingo while staying relevant to your leads. Like I was mentioning just a few minutes ago, things like if you were here last week and we covered ways to share and the importance of being able to speak to people in their language. You know, things like PV and ER and, you know, the Young Living lingo. Is it relevant to our leads who haven't really been fully exposed and brought into the fold yet, right? So we're going to talk about ways that you can even share your monthly promos effectively so that people who aren't even in the company yet are interested and might want to get started. We'll also talk about simple ways to get more people subscribed to your email list where you would be sending this newsletter. And then we'll go over your Q and A. So I'm going to run through some quick training points. And then we're going to pop over in screen share and actually show you how you can really easily set up a great newsletter and kind of create that system around that so you can utilize this every single month. All right, so first, I want to address something that a lot of people get wrong about using newsletters. And, you know, for those of you who are getting started, this is an important thing to keep in mind. And if you're not seeing the results that you want from the newsletters that you're currently sending out, this is something that you might want to take into consideration, a couple of things actually. First, people that sign up to hear from you, to hear your voice, your network, people that meet you, they want to hear more from you. They don't want copy and paste. If they want to learn from Young Living directly, they can sign up for updates, right? And I'm sure if you guys haven't done this yet, you should subscribe to the Young Living blog so that you can see more of how they're sharing and get yourself some more inspiration. And even some things that you could share with your list intermittently as value content. Your people want your voice. So I know that, and this is actually a request that we get really frequently, like, oh, well, will you do a newsletter for us? And while in theory, yes, that could be done, we're really here to serve you in a way that's truly going to serve your business for the long run. And the fact is, is that people want your voice, the people that know you, that want to hear from you, that opt in to hear from you, they don't want to hear from me or Greg or even Young Living directly. It's you that they want to hear from. So we're going to talk about how we can make this really simple and easy for you today so that this is something that you don't have to stress about and you just get it done every month and it helps you. All right, we're also going to talk about how people want to feel heard. We talked about this last week. When we're talking about the 80/20 rule in sharing, in posting on social media, in connecting with people over the internet. My dog is getting my attention with this little bell behind me. I don't know if you guys heard that, but it's really cute. Anyway, they want to feel heard because people don't want to just feel promoted to. They don't want you just coming at them with buy this, this is on sale, buy, 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 right? They want to feel human, right? So balance is the key to success, just keeping that in mind as you're moving forward. So when you create a newsletter, this is something that you would put together maybe once a month and you would send it out. And so there are some things that you're going to want to include in this. Above and beyond, just say all of the PV information that's going to be coming out tomorrow. As important as that is, and definitely to, you know, to your existing business builders and your people who are loyal customers and people on essential awards who are already fully just bought in, they're all in on Young Living, you can send them that information directly. Or maybe they're already getting it because they're that motivated. But in order to use your newsletter to get more people onto essential awards, to get more people onto your membership base, then you've got to keep balance as an important key here because that is what's going to help convert those people who aren't already on board to being on board. So here's some of the things that you would have in a great newsletter. First is graphics and don't start cringing yet if you're not a graphics person or a techie person or don't feel particularly creative. It's okay. Outsourcing is smart and this day and age, it's pretty cheap. So you can find freebies online using pixabay.com. There are lots of different free image resources out there. There's also very affordable apps on the phone. My favorite is one called Word Swag, W-O-R-D-S-W-A-G. I think it's like five bucks maybe if it costs that. I've had it for so long, I don't remember. But you could even go in and select the resolution size. Like if you want this to be a Facebook, you know, cover photo or whatever it is, they have that pre-selected for you so you don't have to worry about the math or do the research. And then you can just place the pretty text over it, over an image that they have tons of free ones. You could also purchase them or obviously DIY them in any way that you like. Greg, there are a couple of image services that we recommend. Can you remind us what those are?
Yeah, they all do slightly different, you know, they offer different types of graphics depending on whether you're doing text promos or email newsletters or whatever. But there's a few. There's one called the Social Oiler. I think her name is Cassandra Pershing, who does that. Used to be called the Monthly Oiler. There's another one called Grow Workspace. And there's another one, Oil Revolution Designs. And I just learned of a new one yesterday that I'm forgetting too. So they're kind of all, there's all sorts of options. There's probably more than just those three or four as well. But they're all excellent. They're all pretty reasonably priced, you know, $5 to $10 a month sort of services. And they, you know, depending on what you're getting, either you get like a monthly newsletter or you'll get monthly graphics and just, yeah, it's good content that created fresh and plugs in quite easily to get oiling.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, and actually, maybe what we'll do is if any of you guys who are here today, if there's a service that you particularly love and use, pop that into the comments and we will compile a list and send that out to everyone to share. Because we believe in doing what you do best. And if that's not being a graphic designer, then by all means hire one. And you can do that very affordably and plug that into your system. All right, so beyond graphics, because obviously you want pretty things. You want this to look interesting so people stay engaged. You want value-forward content. So this can come in the form of recipes or stories. You know, you can do things that are seasonal. You can share something funny that your kid or your dog did, whatever it is. Value just means that it's not promotional, right? It could be entertaining. It could be inspirational. It could be informative and so on. And then helpful information, you know, so how-to or DIY guides and things like that. And you can also, and this is a great place to put, a great thing to put in your newsletter, is information on your upcoming events. So if you have an online class that you're holding, or if you have a class that you regularly offer, or if you are doing a vendor event coming up in that month or in the months ahead, you can put that information here. You can also link off to your events page on your Get Oiling site. Obviously, in the previous bullet here where we're talking about value-forward content, this is where you could use blog posts and custom pages to create things that could link off as well. Or you could just simply plug that stuff directly into the newsletter itself if you wanted to keep it really simple. And then finally, you notice this is down at the end, then you put promos, right? So people love getting a deal. That is something that feels valuable, but it's not the thing that keeps people coming back, right? Unless you just want people who are very clearance-minded and that's really not who you're looking for for Young Living, is it? So you want to make sure that you obviously do include promos, but don't make that the glaring big feature. You want to produce something that people look forward to receiving. And people look forward to receiving something that feels relevant to them, not something that just feels like an opportunity by you to sell them something, right? When you know how you feel when somebody just hits you up because they want to sell you something as opposed to asking you, well, how are you doing? Did you know that, you know, that this month is related to this thing? And then here's this helpful information that correlates with that. I think you'd find that helpful. Do you? Right? That's the kind of feeling that you want to evoke from this, from this sort of content that you would put out. All right. And a tip for you guys, before we start moving into showing you how you can get this done, use the Young Living PV promo as inspiration, right? And you can provide a link off because they make a beautiful PDF every single month. You can create a link in your newsletter that links off to it. And actually, pro tip, because this link stays the same every single month, the PV promo for Young Living, you can actually just have that hyperlink in your newsletter and make that your template and set that and forget it. And just plug in your different information and whatever different graphics you would want to use on a monthly basis. So again, think about it this way, you're personalizing the information that you're putting out there. You're loading it up with all kinds of lovely content that makes people feel good about you, taking care of them, thinking about them, helping them. And then they're grateful to see what else you have on offer. That's the psychology there. So use the PV promo as inspiration. So actually, if we, oh, it's actually letting me do this now. I'm going to switch my share over to show you guys.
I did put a link in the chat to the link for the US market anyway on Young Living site. I think each country has their own.
Got you, got you. So what, I just wanted to show you guys real quick. So this is like Greg just mentioned, it's going to look different in different markets, right? But use this as inspiration. So this is February, obviously, and March is coming up. But borrow some of the language that's here. You know, there's no better month than February to focus on being kinder, gentler and more loving to yourself. And so you can put a, you know, a self-care routine into a February, into a February PV promotion. Or you could just do a self-care newsletter, guys. That is such a great hot topic right now. It's what so many people need so much more of. And I mean, you could be totally oriented around that if you wanted to. But the cool thing is right here where it says click here for full details. This is your PDF. You can actually just grab this link, copy it, and then put it into your newsletter so that people can click off if they really want to get like the super complete exclusive. This is everything that Young Living is offering this month. That's what you would use. So.
Yeah, they have an awesome video there too. And there's a share button on it as well if you wanted to embed that on a page or something.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So we'll, let's go ahead and show folks how they can make a newsletter and get oiling.
Want me to share here or were you gonna?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let me see here. Find the right, there we go. All right, so I happen to have this open to blogging, but to send a newsletter, I guess it kind of depends on like if you're planning on writing this in one sitting or not, where you would start. If you want, if you're planning on writing this over multiple sittings, I'd probably recommend creating a saved reply first so that you have a draft. And that's under contact settings. Whoops.
And that's where the templates are, right? Under saved replies? So you actually don't have to worry about formatting all of this yourself. You can use one of the templates that are here.
Yeah, so you could take like, let's say you had one for your monthly newsletter. You could just click it and then enter the name. Let's say it was February promo and you're going to make one for March. You could do that, type in the name and then it'll create a new one. I'll just edit one of these here. But this is where you would put the newsletter in. So you would, you know, put in your subject in your body. This is where you'd edit it. This is where you could insert, let's say, if I grab, let me grab the link from that PDF. So I will, from that, I have that open in another tab that you can't see. But I'll, so like, you know, it could be like, click here for this month's promo. Details. And then what I'll do to link to it, instead of just having a PDF link sitting there, I'll just highlight it, click the link button and then paste in the link to the PDF here. And then now you have a nice looking link that goes right to the PDF. And then you'll know when people click it, which is really nice. That'll show up inside your contact manager. So I'll just, I'll call this one. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. While we're still here, before we move off to something else, Michelle says that she's tried to embed the promo video in her newsletters in the past and they didn't seem to work. So how can someone best make use of that?
Yeah, videos, a long time ago, somebody that, or whoever made all your email programs decided that videos can't be sent inside of email. So there's a couple of ways of doing that. There's the, probably the simplest way is to make a page or a blog post on your website and link to it in here. A slightly more complicated way of doing it, if you're comfortable doing it a little more tech proficient perhaps. Here, actually, you know what, I'm just going to move this tab over here so you guys can see what I'm doing. Okay, so here's the PV promo page. And as you can see, here's all the graphics. So down here is the video. Actually, I had already clicked share. But what you want to do, and I'm on a Mac here, so there's a keyboard shortcut. I think it's Command Shift F on Windows, or sorry, Command Shift 4, not F. And I don't know if you can see my cursor is like this little crosshair thing that's got numbers on there. But all you wanted, then you can like highlight the area over the screen or over the video screenshot. And then now you have a little screenshot of that. Now, I think on Windows, it's a little bit different. There's like a different keyboard shortcut, whatever. But then now I have an image on my desktop. So I can come over here and let's say I want to link to the video. Then I'll say insert image.
You've got a screenshot of the video.
Yep, desktop here. So like, it would be, I chose yesterday. Here we go. Okay, so go ahead and put this in here. And now it'll upload and you'll see that like, okay, this looks like a video. Of course, I want to make it bigger so it looks a little bit more like a video, maybe left align it here. And so, yeah, they see this and they think, well, hey, this is a video. This is awesome. But you do have to take one more step, which is to click on it and then add a link. So click the link here. And this would be, you know, ideally a link to your page, but you could link right to the video if you wanted to on YouTube just as a shortcut. Because if I go back over here on to the PV page, there's a share button inside of this YouTube video. Click share. And then you can right-click and copy this. And then come back over here and paste that in the URL. And then there you go. You've got a link that looks like a video. People are much more likely to click this than they would just a link because it looks like a video. But that's how you do it. It's kind of, it takes a few steps, but definitely worth it. You get more clicks, I think, this way.
Absolutely. What a great idea.
Cool. So, all right. So I'll hit save here. So I'm making this, well, actually, I'm going to change the name of this. I'll call this my February promo, even though February is almost over here. And maybe Ashley, one thing I might want to touch on is like, how do you make a good subject line to sell the open, if you will? So anyway, I'll just put, I'll just put something in here, like something boring, like February newsletter. So let's say.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, so let's say I've gone through, I've made my newsletter. I'm done with it. So I created my saved reply. I've edited it carefully over two days or whatever. Now I want to go send it. So that's where you go into the contact manager. And you can then pick like who you want to. So they can go click on filter, for example. And you can filter, if you have tags there, you can filter based on who you want it to send to. A lot of times, people send it to everybody. Probably at least recommend segmenting into who is a customer already of yours versus a prospect, if you can. There are ways of doing that, like the contact type or perhaps you're tagging them. But once you've got that filtered down, then you can come over here and click actions and mail all or selected. And then that's a beautiful email footer I've got on this account. But under saved reply here, now we have the February promo, which I can click in here and you can see it put in everything that I just did. And then you would go ahead and hit send, or you can schedule it at a specific time too, if you've got. I know some people have members in different countries. So like sometimes you maybe want to schedule it at a different time of the day so that it's there right away in the morning for them or in the evening and it doesn't ping them at 2:00 AM their time. So it's, you can break it up kind of that way by country or whatever. So that's, yeah, that's kind of, I think, the overview of how to do that.
Oh, and just an aside, and that was actually a great point, Greg, and something that's worth touching on real quick. In your subject line, you could definitely say newsletter, but I would err on the side of opening with a question or a how-to blah, 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 right? So how to get, how to give yourself more love this February, right? That would be a great newsletter title. Or, you know, are you practicing self-love this month, right? Again, keeping with the whole February theme and everything that's there. So a question is always going to get more opens and get people more interested, whether that's in your email or on social media. Because it really feels like you're talking directly to someone and that's always going to get more response than just shouting out and declaring, this is what I got. Like, here's my newsletter. I'm going to sell you things. That can totally work, to be fair. But what's more effective is to reach people in a way that really feels more personal. So a question is always a good way to go.
Speaking of.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, speaking of personalization, while you mention that, this is a great idea too. This is available both in saved reply and when you're composing the message through the contact manager. But you can click on this little bubble icon over here and insert their first name. And so you could open up this newsletter with happy February, contact first name. So it'll personalize it as it sends it. So it'll, happy first, happy February Mary, happy February Jane. You know, it'll put those in there for you. So, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. Highly recommend you guys use that because again, it feels more personal and it's just always more helpful. Samantha asked, what happens if we don't have the Get Oiling app yet? Well, Samantha, actually, if you, because I was going to talk about this a little later, and I will. But if you go over to getoiling.com right now, you can actually get started with us for a dollar for a whole month, for your whole first month, you can get started for a dollar. So, and money-back guarantee, we believe in what we're doing. We believe in helping you. And so if you, you know, you get your dollar back if you don't love us. So you can definitely go over there and start right away. And I'll tell you more, guys, here in just a little bit about the incredible thing that we're offering alongside that $1 to start. And that those of you who are already at Basic Above may have already found out about, but we'll save that for just a little later. Let's see, Becky asks, when adding a click here link, is it best to choose open in a new tab? From my experience, Becky, and my personal preference, I say yes. And that's because a lot of people will use a browser-based email client like Gmail. And if you have more content than just that link and you want people to be able to, you know, stay there with it as well and receive that information that you've linked off to, it's better for it to open up in a new tab. So the way you do that is just clicking that button right there that Greg is showing us. Awesome. All right, Nikki says I've had Get Oiling since convention and it has been such a great program, time saver and more. We're so happy to hear that.
Awesome.
Sweet. Okay.
Yeah, Paige asks under the Q and A thing here. She said, I think she was wondering how I got here and it was under contact settings and then saved replies.
Awesome. Yep, saved replies are so useful, you guys. This is how you can basically create a draft. And you can create, and we've talked about this in creating systems and multiple trainings. We've covered this now. This is how you do newsletters. This is how you do, you know, welcome to the team. This is how you do, you know, welcome to Young Living, you know, here's what you can expect, right? Like this is all the things that you would repeat or that you would, or processes that you would repeat, right? Because you're not repeating the same information each month in a newsletter, but it's the same process. This supports that perfectly. And again, you get to do it yourself. And there's multiple newsletter template formats that you can choose from. I think there's three of them in there, Greg. And you just swap out the images and put your text where the text is. And you can really make it your own.
Yep, I actually think there's more than three. Let me go back to the list here. The ones that say created by Get Oiling are all the templates. So there's several of them. I see there's a couple more pages here. Yeah, there's actually quite a few. Pets, Wellness, Multi-Recipe Makeup, Lab, or they all have, yeah, slightly different looks. And then there's even one for the Young Living anniversary to celebrate somebody's one year or, you know, annual anniversary.
Nice, nice. Kathy asks, she says Get Oiling is a comprehensive all-in-one product. What is different between your site and Young Living's virtual office? Well, we are, we're complementary to the virtual office. Would you say that, Greg?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. There's some things you can do there. You know, I think you can like, you know, maybe send an email there, but there's so much more you can do with us. But there's some other features that they include because they have access to the PV and all that. You know, they can see who's about to go inactive and you can kind of work them together. You can filter your contacts in the Young Living virtual office and then import them into Get Oiling with a specific tag, especially for like when you, for the about to go in actives. That's actually a really good or common use case for people. They'll, they'll look at that and they'll download those and then send them a special message every month.
Yeah. So if you think about your virtual office, that is, that is the sort of the hub of information on your business. It's, you know, who's what and where. And the center of your business operations, right? The things that you do to maintain, to grow, to promote, that's what you do with Get Oiling, right? So you take the core of information over from Young Living, you know, or you use us to feed into Young Living, obviously, to get more members. But then you keep your contact with your members, with your builders, and then of course, with your leads, which you wouldn't be doing through the virtual office. That's a primary distinction is that you would use what we have, right? And like these newsletter templates and things like that to communicate with people who aren't in the fold yet, to bring them in. And then they would go into your virtual office. So we have that back and forth. Nikki said something about sending newsletters as a campaign. There is an important distinction to make here before we move forward too much, right? So there's, so a newsletter is an email blast, right? So a newsletter is something that you send out once a month or once a week or however, you know, whatever frequency you choose. And so that's something that you're either going to compose in messages or like Greg just showed you, using a saved reply, you use one of our templates and then you just repeat that process every month on the same, you know, on the first, right? A campaign is something that's going to release information over a period of time that you've pre-selected according to when somebody signed up to receive information from you. So if you send a newsletter out and it's pertinent to March, like you're going to probably do tomorrow. like you're going to probably do tomorrow, if you put that into campaigns, then somebody could wind up getting that in November, right? So, so there is definitely a distinction there, just to make sure you guys are clear on, on how that works.
Yeah, definitely campaigns are for messaging you want to reuse versus like a one-time or a very time-sensitive thing, it'd be, you just want to send those.
Oh, I'm loving all the, the love over here in the chat. This is, this is so sweet. Jan actually put this really well regarding GetOiling and the virtual office. You have more control over your own branded identity with GetOiling and Young Living is Admin Support Management and, and Info System Support. Cool. All right. Okay, all right, I'm gonna share one more time and go over how to get more people onto your list so that you can get more people subscribe to your newsletters. All right, so we're gonna talk about getting more subscribers. First, you want to make sure that you commit to sharing great exclusive content. Exclusive is important because people aren't going to give up something for something that they can get anywhere, right? Like people aren't going to pay for something they could get for free. They're not going to give away their email address and agree to be marketed to or, you know, emailed on a consistent basis for something that they think they're getting from you on Facebook already, right? So share value content, like blog posts or videos on social media along with the promise of even better content on your subscriber list. You also want to ask your subscribers to share with their friends. Make this, you know, you can put this into a signature line to make sure it's in every single email that you send out or put it in your Saved replies so that it's basically a template that you use every time you send out an email. Love this content, share it with your friends. Sharing is caring and so on. Get in the habit of asking people to share and get in the habit of creating things that are valuable enough that people would feel compelled. They'd say, oh, I know somebody who would really benefit from this. And then boldly ask, because they usually will. When you ask people to do things, especially if you've done something for them already, they will be much more likely to do that for you as well. And it's a simple share and you would, you'd be really surprised at how, I don't want to say viral, I think that's a bit too big of a word to use here, but you do get a little bit of that butterfly effect where, you know, where it kind of ripples back to. It's pretty cool. All right, so you want to use also Lead Magnets. Now, this is a keyword we talked about in our funnel training. You can go back to our previously weekly work session trainings to learn all about that. But using a Lead Magnet, like a recipe, and this is a recipe that maybe they can't just find elsewhere on your website or on your Facebook or e-classes, if you do, you know, an email-based class or a text-based class. Or you've got, you know, a pre-recorded class or something like that. Something that people can opt in for on a landing page, right? Because the, the whole purpose of sending these newsletters is to get a whole lot more people more acquainted and, and more ready to learn more and then to buy, right? So you want to find ways to get them to agree for you to send them regular correspondence with this newsletter, obviously being one of them. And the ways that you get people to do that is to offer them something relevant. So your exclusive recipes, my favorite, my five favorite recipes for, you got it. If you go to, again, the funnel training in the weekly work sessions, you will get lots of great ideas and learn exactly how to do that. All right. And then you want to make sure that everyone in your Facebook groups, if you're using Facebook groups for marketing and living and for communicating with your members and your team, make sure everyone in those groups are subscribed so they don't miss anything. Because it's so easy to not, like, it's like you're shouting in, I don't know, like a packed convention center. And maybe a couple of people right around you that are like closest to you can hear you. But nobody else can hear you because it's so loud and so full. And, and that is what social media is. So you can't bet on a post that you make, whether it's in a group or on your wall, is gonna be seen or heard by people, right? So make sure that the folks that you are already connected to are subscribed to you so that they can receive the good info, the exclusive info that you're sharing. Also, you want to get people curious. I talked about this in last week's training about, you know, kind of leaving something to the imagination where you're trying to, to share. You know, pick a fun name for your newsletter. You know, whatever it is that they're going to subscribe to or, or really angle it. Or your oily angle is what I came up with earlier today, I like that. So pick your oily angle. What is it that you're passionate about that is congruent with oils, right? Are you passionate about personal development or, or spiritual development, meditation? Are you passionate about green living? What's your oily angle? Make your newsletter about that so that it's always interesting enough for you to engage with. You've always got something to talk about, so it's easy to do. And you've always got something new that you can share to get more people learning the great things that you've endeavored to know that could help them on their journey. And then make it a party. Post online about what you've sent out to your list. So I just sent the most awesome recipe out to my subscribers. This is the one recipe that every time I go out to a potluck, everybody asks for it, but you gotta be on my newsletter list to get it. Here's where you can go sign up, right? Let people know what they're missing out on. Give those little teasers. You know, just let people know that there's something cool happening that they're not a part of, but they can be if they opt in. It works, promise. And then build a community. Get people talking about those things. So let's just say, for instance, and absolutely include your team members in this. You know, there are some trainers out there who will say, well, don't, don't, you know, have other Young Living people, you know, on your friends list. And there's some arguments for why that's accurate. But social proof, other people validating what you have to say is worth its weight in gold. So get your friends, get your teammates, get your oily community onto each other's lists, right? So join, you know, you've got a friend in GetOiling that has a newsletter, get on their list. Write on their social media about how awesome that newsletter was that they sent out. Have them do the same for you. Obviously, both of you write cool stuff, so you're not lying. You know, but have that, have that community showing because people want to be a part of something, right? And, and, and why not work together to create more of that sense of community? So that they know, that people know who haven't opted in yet, that you are of service to a group of people that they could identify with as well. And when you do that, you're kind of creating that culture. You build something that people really want to be a part of. And then how much easier is it for you to ask them to join the big community of Oilers, right? And then you want to also put the Opt-In link for your newsletters in your email signature on your business cards. You can just let people know when you're out and about, hey, I publish a newsletter once a month on, give your oily angle, and, and then let them know, you know, all you have to do is go to that website and opt in. And now they're on your list, right? So put it everywhere where people find you. And then offer your newsletter at your live events. If you're already doing this, step up your game. Really give them something interesting. Put that oily angle in there. Decide what it is that you're really gonna be talking about because it's not just Young Living. Your business is not just Young Living. You are your business. Your business is you sharing Young Living in your unique way. So what's your unique way? Make your newsletter about that, offer that to people at events. They'll be more enticed to sign up. They'll be more enticed to read what's in it, to share it with their friends, and then of course to take action on what you share in it. And then also you can have list-exclusive giveaways, right? So you have to be a part of this exclusive community in order to get the opportunity to get this exclusive giveaway, right? Cool. All right, and then one more thing before we go over to our Q and A or a couple. And that's a typo, sorry about that. Have you seen the new GetOiling.com? Don't type it that way. We have just recently done a site makeover and I think it's absolutely gorgeous. Greg did a fantastic job. And we want to invite you to go check it out. G E T O I L I N G dot com. Only one I on that side of the L. And, and one of the things that you're gonna find there, if you don't know about this already, is that we have a brand-new training on offer. We call this Destined for Diamond. It is your 30-day guide to growth. This is, it's a 30-day training program delivered by email, designed to put you on the fast track to massive growth. It's got powerful, in-depth lessons and targeted action steps delivered to your inbox, step by step. Can't stress that enough. Day one, we say do this. Day two, here's your action. Next day, here's your lesson. Next day, here's your action. Step by step by step, for 30 days, we hold your hand. And what we teach you is how to set up and maximize your GetOiling system, to discover better and more effective time management, be more impactful in your business and to become the leader you're destined to be, to grow to Diamond and beyond, because we believe you can. And you can start today and get access to this for $1. Now, those of you who are already with us at Basic or higher, you actually received an email this week that, that showed you how you can go ahead and opt into this. If you haven't yet, definitely recommend that you do. If you feel like you want a reorientation of the system, by all means do it. If you are with us at Cedar Star and you want to take advantage of this training, you too can start this for a dollar. You just have to send us an email to info@getoiling.com. And then of course, if you're not a part of the community yet, we invite you to join us. We have these trainings live every week. We've got this program here that will walk you through step by step on your journey to success with Young Living. And we definitely look forward to supporting you along the way. So head over to GetOiling.com to take advantage of this. Or of course, if you are already a member and would like access to this, just send us an email to info@getoiling.com. So let's move over to our Q and A for those of you who are here and have questions about your marketing or newsletters or anything. Wide open.
Yeah, we have a question from Sandy here. When you, when you want to have a text in landing page, does the text code need to be typed a certain way or with a hashtag number when texting to my GetOiling phone number? No, it's whatever you put in there into the text in keyword. So if it's just oils or class or healthy living or whatever, that's exactly what you, they don't have to type any hashtags or anything in front of it.
Cool, cool. We've got, got a few good questions in the comments as well. Let's see. Can someone opt out of my newsletters on GetOiling and still stay a contact?
Yes, and actually, we recommend that you keep them as a contact because the reason is they will then be in your contact list and marked out as opted out so that it won't email them in the future. So if you, if you would delete them and then somehow they get added back in, then you'll start sending them mails again and you won't even know it. And then it'll increase your likelihood of getting marked as spam. So it's best to keep them in there unless someone like emails you and says, oh, I really, really missed your content, please add me back in, that he can go in there and turn it back on.
Yeah, yeah. And, and this also allows you as well, I think you can, that takes them out of like broadcasts or does it, does it take them out of just the campaigns? Or can you still send them an email directly through the system?
I believe you can send them a one-on-one email, but you can't. It takes them out of all broadcast emails. Anything sent to more than one person will not be sent to them if they're included in that group.
Good, 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 good. Awesome. Okay, oh, Greg has put in the chat here, if you are an existing Young, if you're an existing GetOiling member, where you can sign up for Destined for Diamond to get that training series. And that is actually, it's under My Account, it's on the My Account page, right?
Yep, it's under My Account, Settings, and then there's a Destined for Diamond. If you scroll down a ways, you can click on that and then there's a button. Just simple, one button and you're in.
Ah, Jan has a good question. This will be a good thing to show. How do we change the picture on our Contact Us image?
Yes, okay, so let me share out the screen. It's actually under My Story. It's the same photo as, is there. Okay. So let me share my screen. So this is actually the signup screen for people that are already GetOiling customers. As far as the Contact Us image, that's under My Site, My Story and Photo. And you just choose the image that you want here. Click Choose File, pick a new image. And that changes it in both places. It changes it in your My Story section as well as the Contact me, it uses the same image for both.
Awesome. Um, let's see. Elizabeth asks, what is the cost after the first month? That's gonna depend on which level you start at, which membership level you choose, depending on whether or not you need more or less team leader features or sending capacity and so on. The basic plan is $29 a month, right? So it starts there. Starts at $29. And, and for those of you, I think we, we did have a couple of questions, not here live, but definitely emailed in about our referral program that's still in place. It's just the next month, right? So they get half off. Yeah, so we, we haven't touched the referral program, still in place. You just get that dollar first month. So it's easy to get started and find out if this was right for you. And of course, we've got the training that'll walk you through everything that you need to get started. And you can join us every Thursday here with your questions as well. And if you're watching this as a recording, know that you don't have to just be here live for us to answer your questions. We can either get back to you by email or we could do a demo live here. And then you could watch the recording and get your answer there later. Definitely both a possibility. We got a great question from Michelle. Is there a way to know which link they clicked in your newsletter? I always get a notification that a link was clicked, but it doesn't tell me which one.
Not right now. That's, yeah, that's actually the first time we've had someone request that. I think it's actually being tracked somewhere deep inside the system, but it doesn't show up anywhere inside the Contact Manager. I mean, I shouldn't say exactly nowhere because you can go to your Contact Manager. Yeah, let's see if I can find someone here. And myself, I think I've got my contact for myself where I was just actually clicking an email just to test that out. You can see which email, oh no, this isn't the right contact. I must have another contact. Here's, here's the other one. So you'll see like this tracking on the past actions. So this is an email that has just a link in it. And this shows that, this little envelope shows that they have opened it. And if you hover over it, it shows when. And this shows they clicked it. It doesn't tell you which link in the email, though. So you can track down which email was clicked, but not, currently you can't track down which link was clicked.
Okay. And that's, it's a good question. I will say this, though, just for best practices when sending marketing emails. Your goal is really to get someone with any email that you write or any piece of content that you create, you're looking for people to take a specific action. And so you want to definitely limit the number of directions people can go from a single piece of content, whether that's an email or a blog post or anything else. You want to create sort of a hallway with a door at the end because that's the door you want them to open. And so think about your links that way. And I would try to include as few links as possible inside of a, inside of an email. Now, obviously with a newsletter, if you're gonna be linking off to different blog posts and things like that, then, you know, then that's a different story. And, you know, it's something worth considering in terms of having that there for reporting. But best practices are that you want to minimize the number of directions someone can go when they encounter a piece of content that you've created. Okay. Jan, that's right. Research has indicated over three clicks, you have lost them. That is, that's absolutely correct. And it may even be fewer than that. Like when you go beyond one click, the conversion rate plummets. Because you, you need, like, people want instant. They, they, they want to get what they came for and they get distracted quickly. And one of the books that I recommended in the 90-Day Challenge, Fascinate by Sally Hogstead, one of her, one of her finer points that she puts on getting people's attention is the fact that the modern human's attention span is that of or less than that of a goldfish, which is eight seconds. And on the internet, there's just way too many opportunities for you to jump down other rabbit holes or get distracted or something pops up and, oh, there's a cute baby or a cat on Facebook or whatever. You want them to take the action that you want them to take now. And so you want to provide as narrow an opportunity and as compelling a narrow opportunity as possible to get them to take that action. Awesome. You guys have got great questions today. We got any more? We got time.
I don't see any. Everyone's typing them right now.
I love it. I love, I love it when you guys have great questions. And, oh, and do you guys have any questions about, about sharing? We did a, we did a huge training last week on, on how to share Young Living. Have any of you maybe put to use some of those techniques from last week? And we can maybe talk about those. Heather says, I need to delve into texting more. Can you insert graphics into the texts?
Yes, you can. So I should find a contact that actually has a number on it. But, let's see if I can find one here. So, yeah, when you're, whoops, not there. So if I click Text, there's a Choose Image button. Now all you have to do is click that, pick from one of the images. There's the new one that I just added, you know, might not be the best one, but, and then you just type your message and hit send. And yeah, you can include it. I see a question here from Samantha. Can we send it for a dollar then opt into the diamond training with that price or is the training another dollar? It's actually all for a dollar. You get the system and the training for the dollar for the first month.
And you don't actually, when you sign up, that link that we showed you, if you're an existing member, that's just because we didn't automatically put everybody who's an existing member onto that training series. So you'll automatically start getting those as soon as you get started with us. Yeah, so, so that's, it's just a dollar and you get the entire system and obviously at the, at the level you've selected. And then, and then of course, your training as well. Okay, we got some, see, everybody was typing, all these questions.
That's awesome. Heather had a quick follow-up question on the texting. Can you upload your own images? Yes, you can. There's a plus button here. You click that and you can select one and upload it and it'll add it to your image library. And then you can text away.
And then, you know, you can send this to a lot of people as well if you wanted to. This is obviously just to one person, just in case, I don't know if we're not deep diving into the message one. And the, the first in week one of the weekly work session, we did go into a little bit more detail about how you used the texting feature. And then of course, there's some in the 90-day challenge in the help section in Get Oiling as well, if you're already a member. Yeah, okay, cool. So, let's see.
James has a question there, kind of blow up on texting. What's the difference between sending a text out of Get Oiling with, I assume you mean the two-way texting and not two-way texting? So the difference is when you sign up for Get Oiling, you don't have your own phone number. There's like a central phone number where texts are sent out from. And so because of that, people can't reply, well, I mean, they can reply, but it doesn't go back to you. And every message that's sent out has a little footer on it that says, you know, it'll say your text message, whatever you sent, and it'll say from, it'll have your name and then your number to reply to you. So they'll have to like click that number to reply to you. With the two-way texting, you get your own number so that Get Oiling knows to send it back to you. So people can reply and you can just have a conversation back and forth. And there's like a little chat, chat link you can set up, add to your homepage on your phone and then you can just click there. It'll send you a text when someone texts in, but then there's like the little chat app that you can use to chat back and forth with people. And there's, there's also the text in keywords, which is also a big deal if you upgrade to the two-way texting. You can set up campaigns so that there'll be, certain keywords will trigger campaigns being added. So you can add something that says text oils to whatever your phone number is, and then it'll automatically trigger one or more reply texts and add them to your contact list, which is really cool.
Awesome. Yeah, that's, at this day and age, especially for the, the price that, you know, what is it, is $9 a month, Greg?
Yeah, it's $9 a month.
Yeah, it's $9 a month add-on for your own phone number. And actually, if they call it, it'll, you can have it ring to your own phone so that you can actually answer it. But you can actually chat from right within the, the screen right here. You don't have to worry about, you know, fidgeting around on a phone. I hate texting like this. I'm always voice to text and saying the wrong things because I don't like doing this. But you can actually type just as though you were, you know, on Facebook Messenger or something from right here. So it's really, really valuable in that way.
And you can choose your own phone number as well. To set it up, you click on this chat link on the up, right here, and then it'll lead you through choosing your own phone number. And then you can even search for, like when you're setting up your phone number, you can search for words. So one of the, you know, not surprisingly, very popular keywords to search for is oil or oils. So you can have a phone number that has that in there too. So like whatever it would be, one, two, three oils, I don't know if you can get that number, but you know, something like that in your area code maybe.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty cool how you can do that and, and it's really simple to use and set up. All right. Uh, let's see. Paige says she shared our three sharing strategies with her team and they're currently implementing the favor to offer complimentary detox your home consultations. Can't wait to hear how that goes. Keep us posted. It's exciting. Let's see. Samantha asks, does the app pay for itself? I, let's see, how about this? If you're here right now and you are a Get Oiling member and you feel that the app does pay for itself in some type of way, let us know in the comments how the app pays for itself so that you can provide Samantha with, with your perspective and your answers as, as members of the community. In terms of paying for itself, literally, we don't have like a, excuse me, like a get it for free program. You can definitely, you know, refer your, your teammates and your young living network to us and receive credits towards your account, which would lessen the costs on, on the corresponding months. But when you think about it, if, if we're wondering whether something pays for itself, we have to start asking ourselves, what is our time worth, you know, and, and how, how do we quantify the things that are really valuable to us? And so when you start thinking about the amount of time that you can save by automating certain processes, by, you know, setting up reminders for yourself and follow-up sequences so that you never drop the ball, I think that a tool like this becomes invaluable pretty immediately to a business, especially in, as you start to grow. Because as you start getting out and, and prospecting more and, and growing your network and sharing young living more, you've got more and more balls to juggle and you need a place to organize those things without losing your mind or dropping the ball or dropping many balls. So I'm, I'm interested to, to see how, how our members might respond to that question. So I want to look at that and then get back to these other, the other questions here in the chat. Okay. So Paige says, yes, pays for itself by providing all the tools you need to create systems and staying in contact with prospects and current members. If you're truly, let's see, Jaclyn says, if you're truly wanting your business to grow and have a system that helps you be strategic in your actions, yes, it does pay for itself. Maria says, time is money and it saves tons of time. Yes. Wendy says, the training is worth every penny I spend on the website. I know this will also save me tons of time as I use it more in the future. Thank you guys for your feedback. Really, really appreciate that. And I hope that that answers your question Samantha. Okay, let's see. We have some more questions here. Okay, thinking about links in a campaign to educate about a certain subject, telling a story to educate about how to use those products with links to each product so they can read more. How many is too many? This is a message from Becky. Um, let's see. So in a newsletter, that's going to be the exception, right? Like in a newsletter, that's where you're sharing a lot of information. It could be that you're pointing off to blog posts and other pages. So how many is too many is, it's, it's kind of relative, right? But I would say for best practice in a newsletter specifically, is that you connect off to pieces of content that you've created that provide further opportunity for them to dig further, to contact you, reach out to you and so on. I would, you know, I would stick to three to five, right? So maybe ask yourself, like, notice the newsletters that maybe you subscribe to and see how many links there are in there and how they're structured. And you'll probably see that the threshold is probably about three to five pieces of information that they can veer off into. That's probably the line that you don't want to cross. All right. Oh, we got a couple of good questions about text marketing.
Yeah, yeah, I see those here. Okay, so can we get a, a Get Oiling phone number to text Canada and the US from the same number? Yes. Text to the US and Canada, all, they're, they're, I think they're seen as like kind of the same country, I mean, they say it has the same country code. But yeah, you can actually text anywhere, I think almost anywhere in the world with our system as well. So it, there is a note with that, it does use more marketing credits outside of the US and Canada. So your texts, and some countries don't support picture messages. But by and large, you can reach pretty much anyone in the world who has a phone number as long as you have your, the country code in the contact manager.
Fantastic. So let's see. Suzie asked if we are like Project Broadcast or different? We are, well, that's a yes and a no. In that, in that we have text marketing capacity as they do, but we are a complete business management system so that you are able to reach out by email, via text, having, you know, newsletter, blog, website, everything. It's all under one roof. You don't have to worry about separate memberships. If you go actually to GetOiling.com, there's a pop-up down at the bottom of the screen where it's like a little help chat bot that, that actually has a video from a young living leader. And they talk about some of the differences between different systems that serve young living. And she's got some really cool insights there that you might want to check out if you want to get somebody's, you know, personal point of view who, you know, has used multiple systems. Okay.
Jan asks if, if we can add an MP3, which is audio, to a page. You can't have it like automatically play, but you can upload a file and link to it. You could say like, click here to download my audiobook or whatever, something along those lines. It's totally doable. It's just a file instead of automatically playing like maybe the MySpace days used to be way back when.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a, like a MIDI player.
Yeah, right.
I was in like seventh grade, I built a, I built a website and had a MIDI player on it and little GIFs and butterflies. It was really. All right. Um, okay. Cool. Pays for itself if I use it. I think that's, you're, you're not alone. I think if, if you just, you know, take baby steps, you know, this is understandably, there are a lot of directions that you can take. We are comprehensive. You can run a full-fledged online info empire with Get Oiling, but you don't have to do it that big, right? Like you, you can baby step your way up. You can just newsletter once a month and use the Get Oiling Digital Upline Coach to make sure that you're keeping up with your IPAs and tracking your activity so that you know when you're like, oh man, this, this month's check is not what I wanted it to be. You can go back and look at last month's activity and say, oh, well, that's why, right? I mean, obviously sometimes there are seasonal dips, we are aware of that, but, but our activity corresponds. And then of course, you can prevent those seasonal dips because you know that last year at this time, I did the same amount of activity as the month before and it dipped. So I'm going to work, you know, I'm, I'm going to reach out to twice as, as many more people or I'm going to hold double the amount of events on this particular month to prevent the income dip in the next month, right? Lot of ways that you could look at it, obviously it benefits you to use it. But, but don't stress yourself out or feel like you got to be perfect at everything